We are now recording live.
Okay. Alrighty. This will be interesting. Okay, call to order the Board of Education. This meeting on Wednesday, March 18th of the Garrison Board of Education, a regular meeting, March 18th, 2020. And our first order of business as always is the Pledge of Allegiance. I won't ask, I won't ask the Board to stand, but I will recite it. And if anyone wants to join in, feel free. Okay, you ready? Let me see, I can't even see myself. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and justice for all. Did I do that right?
If everyone could unmute themselves.
Sorry. My bad. Did I fail on that, Alex? There we go. All right. Item number two, President's Announcements. Okay. So, good evening, Garrison. It's been a pretty difficult time, as everyone is aware. I just wanted to recognize how difficult it's been in this adjustment to our new regime, as they say. School is closed until April 13th unless otherwise indicated by the Board of Education. So you will receive such a communication if we feel, deem it necessary to lift the closure. But we are planning on being closed until April 13th. Although these are difficult times, it's also a period of gratitude. I first wanted to say thank you to the administration team, the facilities team, that pulled off the closing of the school and all of the machinations that go into running any particular organization and business. So, thank you so, so, so much to the administration, administrative team and the facilities team who continue to work through this closure. And also to the, of course, to our teachers. I think we're all in, I think the, our notion of what a teacher does is put in fine relief in a moment like this and the importance of schools. And I can't say enough how appreciative I am of their work and the Board's general appreciation for their ability to move on to an online platform so quickly. And, you know, of course, there's going to be glitches here and there, I imagine, but we have to remember that these are, these are not only teachers doing their job, but they're also family members themselves, having to care for children, having to care for parents and whatnot. So, I just plead for patience. And I wanted to thank the parents who are learning what it is to, a little bit about how to assist the child in learning firsthand. And I want to appreciate their gratitude as well for all the work that the school has done in pulling off the last 10 days or so. Lastly, I wanted to thank Nurse Melissa and Angelina's who are looking out for and supporting our families in need. Angelina's pizzeria in Carmel, who has graciously assisted us in that process. The public and the, should expect a fair amount of communications from the Board, the school, and possibly the PTA as well, as we go about trying to enhance the learning of our children in this context, as well as supporting our community. So despite these difficulties, the work continues. We have a design team meeting to go over the renovation of the school, and that process is continuing. And we are also searching for a superintendent, which is going, which continues at pace. So we will be interviewing people in roughly two weeks, first interviews. Meanwhile, the superintendent is busy complying with all of the new mandates that have come down from New York regarding this particular emergency. And that's, that's a fair amount of work. So whenever there's an emergency declared, the the state will issue certain mandates that the schools have to respond to. So, a lot of gratitude for that. Committee work, as will be discussed, continues modified, and we're going to try to identify aspects of the committee work that can be done within the smaller group of the Board. And those aspects that involve the larger community and the teachers will need to be put on hold for a little bit, so that we can be effective and inclusive. Where we can be, where we can be productive is in areas of committee work that is more germane to the Board's activities. So, just, we want to make sure that the priority here is the health and welfare of the employees and the children, and the educational, the educational progress of the children, and our ability to facilitate that as best we can as a Board by supporting our teachers and administration. So, that's it, that's all I have for that. Any, if it's, Deborah, you're up. Do you want to amend any of that or all of that? You have so much to share, so.
I'll add to that, how's that? I too absolutely have to thank our teachers and the staff. I have to thank our parents, the community, you, the Board, our volunteers. This has just been an example of everyone coming together and doing what they can and then doing even more. So, this is a community to emulate, really, in terms of how everyone has stepped up and taken on a role. So I really do need to thank everyone, and I'll get into some examples of that in a little bit. Our teachers are checking in every day with students. We check in with staff, they're checking in with each other. I just ask the community and everyone out there to check in with someone every day. It just makes a difference. I know our administrative team, including Melissa and Nancy, checked in together this morning, and it makes a difference. It really does. So, I encourage everyone to do something for someone else. Role models are great things, and we need to provide that support. Let me, since you said compliance, instead of starting with all the good things, let me start with compliance. So, as of last night, we have a, we have a governor's directive to provide childcare to all K-12 children whose parents are either emergency care worker, EMS, healthcare provider, fire and safety, first responders. I actually have a very formal list. I should probably read it that way. Licensed health professionals such as physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, registered nurses, LPNs, nurse assistants, lab personnel, emergency service providers, law enforcement officers, and fire department personnel. And that list goes on. They're asking us to, and I have until 5:00 PM tomorrow, to put together some overview of our plan. To SED, it must be posted. So, along those lines, simply know that we have some things going forward, and that will happen. And we also need to, as of now, really also provide daycare somehow for the under five, under kindergarten population. So we'll be reaching out to healthcare providers. We had a call today, and we're working on that. But on those, on some of that, just so you know, as Alex was kind enough to create an online survey, we'll be sending that out and posting it on our website. This isn't just for our students, this is for any student who resides, any child who resides in our community. So, that's getting put together. Our Nurse Melissa has offered to help us with that. It involves probably taking temperatures of students coming in, no more than 10 in a classroom. I'm sure I'm forgetting aspects, but that's something that we started working on, and we'll begin to do that. I've been in contact with the Haldane Superintendent, and there's places where maybe we can share some of that, but, and not just people who are working in Putnam County. These are parents who could be working in New York City, working in Westchester. So there's a lot going on with this. And the Commissioner today in the conference call just reiterated, I think, what we all know, everyone needs to do their part, we need to try to make that happen. We have lots of questions, but we are going forward on that. So, along the same lines, e-learning was part of that compliance mandate. We had already got ourselves up and running, and I really have to thank the staff and Nancy, who've been doing that. E-learning will count as an instructional day right now with the waiver of 180 days, at least for the closure the Governor mandated for 10 days. We find that executive orders are changing everything on a regular basis, and how they're, they read is continue, continuity of learning is the continuation of education in the event of a prolonged school closure, that we need to do that going forward. And just so you know, as of, just a little while ago, SED suspended the administration of the English Language Arts Test in grades three through eight in both print and online versions. So, I'm assuming they mean to say math as well. They didn't in this directive to us, so lots changing. I'm going to stick with some compliance issues before I get into our building. SED also recognizes that this reaching out to our special needs students is difficult with this online learning, and so they're, they're asking us to do whatever possible in different formats, wherever possible. And I have great examples of where our staff has done that before this came out. I know Dusty's been involved with the school budget votes. There's lots of question in what's happening with the budget votes, the elections. The Commissioner said today they're hearing that the governor's office, as they say, across the street, is discussing not only paper ballots, but maybe even pay, paper ballots and pushing out the vote until June. So I think that just sort of reiterates all the unknowns that we have right now and the things that keep changing. Sometimes it's hard to put things into writing when I put it down, and the next thing you know, we're hearing something very different. So let me sort of go back to some of the things that we're doing. We're doing a lot. And I'll tell you, everyone's really stepped up. So, some of the things, before I go into classrooms, there's just some technical changes that we implemented here. In order to be remote payroll, VPNs, we opened up the entire Google Suite for greater accessibility. We put on K through two home access for Google. They had in, they had in-school but not home access. Chromebooks have been provided as needed for students. They continue to come in, and Alex is getting, we kind of cut it off on Tuesday at, by Tuesday, because we needed to move forward and there was, we had to move forward. So we're collecting names now, and we plan on, right now, the anticipation is Monday, opening backup. If parents let us know, we'll have that ready at the door for them, and we're moving forward with that. The, we're also doing remote attendance check-in for students towards the 180 days. I know parents might ask why, but again, you know, if we can keep some of this together, it helps us with all the stated reporting that we're going to have to do. We fully recognize everyone's entering into this e-learning at a different place. Kindergartners, some parents have more than one children, how do they make that happen? So there's, there's lots of flexibility built into the plan. Let's see, what else did I want to share on that aspect? We're, just a couple of things, and I think the Board may know this, but I'm saying it for the public as well. And this is a work in progress. You know, we put a PD block in our, for teachers in our schedule, and that's really what we're saying to parents, here's all the things you should be doing, what you could be doing, and we encourage our kids to do outside, so that we called it recess. So, we are going to be doing some PD from them at times, really enhance and allow our teachers' flexibility and how they deliver instruction. We've, we've asked words of advice, Melanie and Holly, and they have been back in touch with me every day. They've been reaching out to all the teachers. We're doing a K-8 writing piece that will be interactive, that'll be e-learning, we're putting that in place. So there's, I would just ask everyone to be patient as we're doing this, it can't all happen on day one. So it's moving forward, they'll be part of our block from two to three, supporting our teachers and offering suggestions. It clearly needs to look different for a kindergartner than an eighth grader. So, and one of the takeaways that one of our teachers said is, when we did our, one of our early Zoom meetings, is family first, mine and theirs, and we're encouraging that. Flexibility for all, it can look however it fits each family, and every family is different. We're working to strengthen what kids already know and move instruction forward and do the best we can and take it one day at a time. And sometimes someone right there at the forefront can really say it better than any of us. So I appreciate that. Some other things. Just so you know, with attendance, we've reached out to every family we haven't heard from, and I think we're, when I talked earlier to Nurse Melissa, we were about 98% of our students checked in with us in the morning. There's a weekly wellness with families beginning next week. We'll do this weekly wellness. We're checking to see if they had need anything, food supplies, everyone's in a different situation. And our psychologist, Jessica Van Decker, and our counselor, Krista DiDiego, are also a bit part of that. We've taken them from more of their, many of their classroom pieces to put them on the support piece. I ask everyone to go to the GUF's news and the website. Both of our counselors put tips to reduce anxiety and stress. I think they all could use to see some of that. Our e-learning plan is there, our communications are there. What else do I need to tell you? So, there's a Google Classroom that was created for all students, K-8. We're working on linking students together, and Alex is doing some activities for that. Please know we already have 94 students enrolled. And I think that's a real quick summary without taking this entire meeting, talking about what's going on. But it's a work in progress, and I really thank everyone. So I see all these smiles, so I can, any, I'm gonna ask, well, I won't ask if you have questions yet, because then I have to unmute you all.
Can I have a question? I have a question.
Sure, David.
Deborah, how is the, the balance between Google work, what do they call, Google workbook?
Sweet, the whole suite, yes.
And, and Zoom happen? I mean, how much, how much of this remote learning will be in the form of, of teachers connecting visually with, with students?
Teachers can connect through Google Suite visually with students. So Zoom, we've really set aside for meetings like this. Google Suite has Google Hangout where they can talk, where they can do a visual check-in. They have that ability. What we haven't opened up, and probably Alex is the better one to describe this, we haven't opened up where kids can chat with each other outside of the, that piece. But no, we can, we can absolutely, we have it opened. So even our teachers will be meeting as we move forward on the Google platform, not on the Zoom platform, and they'll be doing it much like we're doing here. Sarah?
What I was wondering was, was, as this evolves and becomes more, whatever, efficient, what's the balance between the FaceTime?
Okay. The last thing we really want is, the last thing we want is our students on a screen all day. It's not something we support, we believe in. You'll see, if you get on there, you'll see that, for example, Patrick Beckley has all, a whole list of activities students can check off, if they did kickball, if they went out and ran, if they did some calisthenics, his list is extensive. And then there's videos for students if they want to go along with that, but there's a lot of encouragement for students to do things independently. And when I say that, we're not talking about do a worksheet independently. So, I would just say that right now, this is a work in progress. We're, today was day one. We're hearing back from parents how well this is going for many of them. They've seen and spoken to teachers, support staff, other individuals. So, I would say it'll look differently next Wednesday than it does this Wednesday. And part of that'll depend, we'll get better at it, and the longer we're out, probably the better we'll get, but we know.
I just.
James?
I would just add, Deborah, that, you know, part of the, the idea here is that it's going to be different things for different kids, based upon age and class and teacher and content and material. I, you know, I think, and we're gonna leave it, I think we need to leave it to, you know, the teachers to identify how to best use the tools. At the same time, they'll, you know, grow more adept at utilizing and more, the tools. And I think that it, as a teacher myself, and I'm sure that the other teachers could support this claim, it's different. It's really different to prepare, it's a different kind of experience. It's very different to teach in front of a classroom than to teach in front of a camera. It's very, it's just completely different. You can be an excellent classroom teacher and be a lousy online teacher as I am. I'm like, really not good at this. I'm hoping my students are not watching this, but I'm definitely not very good at online teaching. And it, it just is a different level of preparation and a different kind of teaching. So, it's not analogous, it's, it's, it's a different kind of thing. And I think we gotta, we have to, one should recognize that, you know, that's, that it's really kind of a, it's a real shift, it's not a small shift. And Matt probably could step in and say something at this point, right?
Sarah has a question. Sarah has a question as well, and I think, you know, what I've been saying, go ahead.
I'm sorry, my question is not related to the Google Classroom. I had a question regarding our compliance with childcare. Is that only for during school day hours that we need to provide childcare, or is it 24/7 for first responders?
It's not 24/7, it may come to that. Right now, it's looking like seven or eight in the morning until six at night, that's what I'm seeing, but those are the kinds of questions we don't have completely answered. We had a call at 3:00 in Putnam County, even the county wasn't sure. There's, for our early childhood students, the ones we're not typically, we don't typically see in our school, there's about 180 seats open in, in the county, but that extends into Duchess County as a region. So certainly those, those are options. So, that, that's first responders and, and healthcare workers will get first chance at those spots, but it's, it's an extended day. Because we don't have a school lunch program, we did actually send up the paperwork on that, that we have, that we would comply on what was needed, and we were told that we were exempt because we don't have a program. So, we wouldn't be feeding, we would simply be having this children come in, transportation's provided by the parents, it's not provided by the school. They would come in, we'd have to have some kind of rotating staff. There's all kinds of cleaning protocols along with that, possibly taking temperatures of students as they come in. So there's, there's a lot of pieces to that.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to piggyback on and respond to what James and David were talking about. I think the teacher experience is hugely different. I don't, I think James put it perfectly. And I think that there are two things that I think teachers are probably trying to figure out, and I speak from personal experience on this, is one, in terms of that screen time, there will be more screen time than usual, obviously, as there is in this meeting right now. And how do you make that screen time effective? How do you make the screen time efficient and productive and balanced? For example, what David was talking about, between interfacing between teachers and students versus watching videos versus filling out Google Docs. I think also, the, one of the hard adjustments is so much about being a teacher is trying to understand the student experience. And so I would, I would speak for myself, but I think teachers hopefully would agree with what I'm about to say, and I'm certain they do. Feedback from families will be really important in the coming weeks about what, how this is being experienced. Obviously constructive collaborative feedback, but you're talking to a computer, and so you don't know how it is for the student. And so, I just experienced second grade life today with my son, and it was an interesting first day in lots of totally new ways. So I think we'd encourage the parents to help their students in terms of communicating what's working, what's hard, what's better, and all, and what's challenging.
Deborah, can you, can you lay out?
James, you froze.
Think our school.
You're freezing on us.
Am I frozen?
You're fine now, go ahead, try again. You'd like me to lay something out?
Yeah, I want you to, if you can, can you lay out maybe for the public where you think we are in regard way ahead of the game, on pace with any district, you know, behind in this transition? I think I know your answer, but I just wanted the public to hear where you think we are.
And what I've been hearing as we've been going out to meetings is that we are way ahead of the curve on this one. I know that Alex was at a curriculum meeting, he shared our documents, other districts were just starting those conversations. We know that a lot of districts haven't, teachers have not had any training with any of this, could be Google or online. By no means experts, I don't think anyone is, thank you, Matt, for saying that. But we are certainly, from the feedback that I've gotten from other, other teachers who are, who are parents from other districts, we're, we're doing very, very well with this. But I think, as Matt said, a big piece of it is checking back with families and students. I think that's why Alex created that, all the students can talk about, to us about how do they feel about it? When he gets up, I think he's going to talk about one student saying they missed school already. And we need to hear those things, and we need to learn from those pieces. James, in case you don't know, you are completely blocked out now, I don't know.
Yeah, I know who I am.
Okay. So I think that's one answer. And then I really have to say that Jessica and Krista, part of that, along with Nurse Melissa, part of that weekly check-in is to see where they're going to direct that. If families are in crisis, they're directing people in one aspect. If families are, if the children are struggling with the e-learning, that's another. We, we've set up ways where we're actually going to provide some tutoring as needed. I know that even Nancy's been online with families, helping them get used to the, the e, the technology aspect. So I think, I think this is asking, and we've talked about this, asking all of our staff to, to repair the plane and make, create it as it's flying. And we're doing that, and I, that's why I'm in awe every day of the teachers in this building. No one has said, I can't do this, do I have to do this? They've all figured out a way to do it better. So I commend them on that. We came up with an idea, and they say, but if you do this, it can be better. So there's chat groups in Google with teacher groups. They're set up to have redundancy, so no one's working in isolation. I think that's key, teachers are working in teams. They've been assigned teams, so, and, and so even our support staff have been assigned to those teams as well. For example, our, our speech teacher is focusing on our, our early childhood students, our K-12 right now. So while yes, she has students she must see due to IEPs, and she's meeting with them, her focus is the K, the younger ones right now, because she can provide more support for those teachers that are there. And I know you said this, but I'm going to say it again, you know, our teachers are parents as well, and their children are home too. So they are juggling their own children's education along with ours, and that's one reason to have it deep, so that someone else can pick that up as well. Our specials teachers are at music theater, phys ed, they're teamed up, they're coming up with integrated units, and I think that's the other thing people need to understand. We're not teaching, we're not teaching by subject as much, as we're really doing an interdisciplinary, integrated approach. It works better on e-learning, and I don't know that anyone's outstanding at it, but we're all trying, so, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Deborah?
Well, I have more that's not on that part, I have more. I know. But I just wanted to say a couple of things that we need to review. Just, I said budget votes, let's see, technical e-learning, maybe I don't have that much more. I want to be sure, we all know that we have a design meeting tomorrow. Again, we are meeting with our design team, and we're doing it by Zoom remotely. So I would just simply say, this is also a work in progress. It's important that we move ahead with the PISA program process, because we certainly want input from all of our staff in order to get that design phase to SED, and then we don't get behind on our project. So we did, and tonight, I believe you'll be appointing a construction management firm. I really want to thank the whole team who came together. I really want to thank the whole team who came together and was part of the RFPs, you know. Sue wrote that RFP, helped re-screen them. Michael did that as well. Board members hadn't, were on the interview committees. It, it made a difference and so we're appointing a CM tomorrow. We're talking about doing this remotely. Teachers are all part of that. They already have the invite. Some of you board members will be on that as well. They'll be coming in and out. We worked with Garrett today to make sure that, again, that whole idea of showing documents that he wants everyone to see from our earlier meetings is ready to go. So that is, that is going forward. That certainly, you can't design a building on, online. So the teams will be in our buildings, doing testing, taking measurements as, as long as we are told we can do that going forward. So I'll kind of stop there. There's more, but I think anything else will come up in the committee reports and some of the other aspects. So thank you, James.
Yeah, that terrific. I think, I think we, I think I speak for, I definitely speak for the board. We, we want to underscore appreciation for all you're doing. We, I just want to let the public know that there will, our public comment period will be a Q and A in which you can type in your questions and I'll read them aloud. And then the board or Deborah can respond as we, as we see fit. So we're going to amend our public comment period to be a little bit more participatory if this works out. Okay?
Okay.
Item, let's see.
Well, I just promoted, I thought I promoted Alex to a panelist. Let me try one more time.
Sure. I see his name. There he is.
Yes, he did. He said to us today and I thought that was hysterical. I'm not that creative.
Turn on your mic, Alex.
Yes. Do you want me to unmute you? There you go. You're unmuted.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? I am at school.
You're at school in the daytime. It's amazing.
Yes, yes. I, I didn't catch that detail.
All right. You're, you're.
So first I did, I wanted to echo some of the, I think, comments of gratitude. Just, I think it's important first to thank Dr. Jackson and also to all of you, just for your swift decision-making. I know all of you met on Saturday. Our school community and our community just really appreciates all of your efforts. And as Dr. Jackson had said before, a lot of those in the region, I think, are really respecting the decisions and they were difficult ones to be made. So, so thank you. I did also want to recognize and thank our, our teachers who are absolutely incredible. They have put forth such amazing effort today. And, and really in, in the midst of some unprecedented circumstances, have provided some really high quality and rigorous instruction. I think there's always room for improvement, but to have, to say that we have this started so quickly and so effectively, I think it's, it's really testament to, to the hard work they do each day. And finally, I did want to thank the, the teacher aides, the support office and custodial staff. They have been just unwavering in their support of just getting the building ready and closing, opening and what have you. So thank you to them as well. So as Dr. Jackson said before, I was actually on a call earlier this morning with the curriculum council. Approximately 30 of the districts in the Westchester and Putnam region were participating. And I have to say from the feedback or from that conversation, we are in a very good place. I felt very confident. I shared that with Dr. Jackson. A lot of places are still trying to transition from a lot of the hard copy materials and things that we made many of those shifts very quickly, where many are still trying to provide professional development. We already have. So, so again, I think we are, to answer James's question earlier, I think we are in a very good place. Fewest highlights, I'll try to be brief from the, from the day. Mrs. Ricky had stated she had a nice sign that wishing everyone a happy first day of e-school, which I thought was very appropriate and creative. Nurse Melissa did take attendance, counted for as Dr. Jackson said, 98% of the students. I had created a school-wide page. About 95 students are participating. So we shared the daily announcements this morning. We did a virtual lunch. I was able to share lunch with many of the students and then make sure that they had recess at the end of the day as well. As for the instructional day, our teachers have already made sure that they either have invited me into their virtual classrooms, whether it be by as, as a co-teacher or as a student. So I am walking virtually into kindergarten classrooms, second grade, middle school. And I have to say the common threads are absolutely just busy as an understatement. And our teachers are responding to so many, a wide range of questions. I think it was referenced before too of, it's a learning curve for us all and the, the interaction with our students and, and meeting, as Matt was saying, meeting our students where they are. It is a new challenge, I think, for us all, even for myself, in navigating that classroom for the school. But I think our, our teachers have really met the challenge and taken on with, with some courage. Words of encouragement that they had shared throughout the day, things such as, we, we all know you're trying and that is key to everything. I'm sad that we can't have our regularly scheduled class, but we can still be active and have lots of fun. Shared some tips for the day. Take a deep breath. Take it one day at a time. I think this is very apropos for all of us as well. Do what works for you. Get outside, enjoy the sunshine. One had stated too, I'm sad we won't be together for a while, but you are now all superheroes in training because we're helping to save the world by staying home for a bit. So I think that also is a testament to our teachers creativity in, in the midst of some, some challenging times. Some student takeaways. Dr. Jackson, to reference before, one, one student just quite simply said, I love Jim and put it out there for, for the world to see. And then one student had commented early this morning, I seriously miss school so much. And I think that's important for us to just remember because at the heart of this, our, our kids are, are in a really set of unusual circumstances. And I think our teachers are doing everything to reach out to families, to students, to make sure that first, health and safety and wellbeing first and foremost. As Dr. Jackson said, those weekly check-ins for wellness will, will go on next week. Thanks to Nurse Melissa, to Ms. Van Decker, to Ms. Diego. And we will continue to do that to make sure that our, our families are all, we're connected with them. And I think that is all I have for, for now, from school.
Any question, any questions for Alex?
Thank you, Alex. I'm going to move you off as a panelist, if you don't mind. And I'm going to make you an attendee and pick up. And now promote, it's like I'm promoting people here. I'm promoting, and that's the word they use, Sue, to a panelist because we're going into the business section of the meeting. So Sue.
While we do this, I just want Alex to know how much he's appreciated. He worked extremely hard this week and I just wanted to say thank you very much to Alex especially. Getting everything up and running and getting teachers on board with this particular shift in curriculum and instruction. So appreciate it.
So Sue, did I get you up there? No, you're still an attendee. Let me try again. There, you should be there. Um, Sarah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I just, while we were waiting, I wanted to say I really enjoyed the Alex's morning message. It was great. And the students, the kids really loved it. It felt welcoming. So thank you for that and thinking of that.
Hey, Jane, next section, financial reports.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
All right.
So I'm going to get right to it so we can get through the meeting. The first financial reports are the treasures reports. Have the multi-fund account where we started out the month of January with $1,009,912,466.98 and had revenues totaling $286,829 and expenses of just under $1 million. So we ended out the month with $1,218.59 and 58 cents. And for the investments, we started out in January with $9,218,295.93. Had very small amount of interest of $1 million, I mean, $1,048.60 and ended the month with $9,219,344.53.
Okay. Questions to the treasures report? And I don't see a hand. So I need a motion to accept the, to adopt the, accept the treasures report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Excellent. The Board of Education, the Garrison Union Free School District accepts the treasures report with Ms. Torme's emphatic response.
Sorry, is that too loud?
20, 20. That's presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, there we go. Raise your hand if you say, if you agree. There you go. There's a hand. Excellent. All right.
And so the next on the agenda are the budget status, revenue status and warrant reports. And as per usual, they're, they're pretty business as usual, but I just want to say that, you know, the business office staff has paid all the vendors up to date to make sure that that was being done before we left for this break unknown. There is a plan to go in periodically and make sure the bills are being paid because there has been some concern with vendors. But unless there's any specific questions on those reports, I can move on to the budget transfer report.
We, we are, we're paying, we're paying our vendors for services rendered, correct?
And/or materials. I mean, you know.
It's not things about to happen. It's things that already happened.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes. We're not paying anybody in advance, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, because the future's vague, so.
Yes, yes. So if there's no questions on that, then I'll move forward with the budget transfer. There is a budget transfer there for $79,500 and it's mostly due to just changing for salaries. I guess the bulk of it was salaries and BOC services. We did hire an aide mid-year, so that was really just an adjustment on one budget line. And BOC services I'm seeing mostly in the guidance area is increasing. And so this is my estimates of where I feel like we're going to be spending for, on these lines that need to be increased.
All righty. Okay. Need a motion to accept the budget transfer.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Be resolved. Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District approves the budget transfer number six and the amount is $79,500. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Oh, the ayes have it. Nene nays, no? Okay. The ayes have it. Okay. How we doing on the budget?
I'm going to give you an update on the budget. Dusty's going to upload the presentation. So we should all be able to see that. So just hold on a minute and then I'll, I'll start speaking again.
Okay. Where is this going to appear, by the way?
You'll see. You'll all be on a, on a lineup on top, which you can move or minimize. And basically you'll be seeing Dusty's screen. So she'll just do a share screen. So now she's going and just, there we go.
Yep.
Is everyone fine with that, seeing it?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Okay, so you can move to the next page, Dusty.
Got it.
So here's an updated budget. Basically, I, I did change some things in the budget, but not in this area here. This is all the general support areas. We have Board of Education, Central Administration, Finance Staff, Central Services and Special Items. Overall, in this area, it would be an increase of $23,976. And this really hasn't changed. It's just expanded from the last time I presented to show a more detailed of the budget. So we can go to the next slide. This is the instruction area. And I did, I did change this slightly from the last presentation, mainly in the special education area. I did bring that down about $110,000 because after speaking with Jen Muir and special ed, one of the placements where we thought was going to be out of district would probably be more in district. This is one of the new students I had talked about that maybe, again, so. Overall, this is, you have admin and improvement, which would be like Alex's area than the teaching. Generally, you have general education, special education, instructional media, and then all the support services. Looking at that, all these areas, it's $6,589.43, which would be an increase of $3,127.38. So this is the bulk of the change in our budget this year. And again, it has a lot to do with tuitions and, you know, the bulk of it being special ed tuitions. We can go to slide four. The next slide here is the district transportation. We have district transportation, contract transportation. Again, that's going down only because last, this current year, we bought a van. So we have a slight decrease of $12,077.9. And the next section is what they call undistributed, but it's, but basically benefits and debt service. And again, this hasn't changed since the last presentation and that's going down slightly. You see, debt service is going down $42,000 and the benefits are going up 38. So we can go to the next slide. We showed the overall change in budget would be $320,482.84 with a budget to budget increase of $290. Go to the next slide. So this does change the estimated revenue a little bit, not taking out as much in our fund balance and reserves. I just changed that slightly by $110,000 to, so we have a balanced budget. Right now, if you look at the state aid number, the 917380 is what I originally got from the governor's office. I, I know that the, they're up in Albany, they are working on trying to have the budget in place by April 1st. That would be our next board meeting where you're planning to adopt it. I'm not sure if this number is going to change because there is a lot of talk that they're going to be cutting the budget quite significantly. And I'm not sure how that's going to affect schools. So right now, this is the best information I have. So that gives us, gives us a tax levy of $9,503,650, which is an increase of about $218,000 over last year. We can go to the next slide. I just wanted to, I know I showed this slide earlier in the year as well, but I just wanted to bring it up here and show you how the fund balance is dropping off and it probably will be dropping off. You know, my best estimate, probably in that 2024 year to 2026 year. So we have to keep an eye on that. We are using quite a bit. And I do have, I do have a fear that, you know, our, our state aid may go down, not, usually it goes up after it's finalized up in Albany. I don't know how it's going to be this year. And then I guess we have the last slide, which is just a reminder of when we're going for the adoption, the public hearing. And so far, right now, the budget vote is supposed to be for May 19th at the school. That may change. So we'll have to just keep posted on that. So slides can come down. Is, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, there you go. Great. Questions? Any questions? I think it's a pretty volatile situation as far as the budget goes, only because the current situation throws the state aid in doubt a little bit, right? situation throws the state aid in doubt a little bit, right?
Yes, yes, it does. I think everybody's, we'll find out within two weeks, is what I know. I know that they're, they're working on it, and they're planning to have numbers out by April first. And I know, I'll, I'll give you the updated information probably at the next board meeting.
But is the problem that state revenues are going to decline precipitously? Is that the issue?
I, I, the state is estimating that their revenues will be declining by the billions because of this health scare that we have. So they have to adjust their budget. And how it affects schools, nobody knows at this point, at least they're not letting us know. But they're going to be adjusting their budget by billions. And I mean, if you just listen to the news, I, I would think money's going to be moving to healthcare, and, and maybe schools won't be affected, especially since we are going to be sort of the backup helping with childcare and stuff. I'm not sure what it's going to look like. So we'll all have to stay tuned, and as soon as I know, I will definitely update you.
Okay.
Deborah, do you have any information on that?
I just wanted to weigh in, but not necessarily on that. I think, with the way things have changed so fast, I'm not even willing to begin to predict what the next week or month will look like. When they're talking about putting budget votes off until June, I think that tells us something. If, if there's some kind of message there. But what I did want to say is that I really have to thank Sue. This has just been a tremendous effort on her part, not so much the budget. We had worked on that earlier, but just that steady aura of how are we going to do payroll? How are we going to do pay our vendors? All those details? How can we make sure that each of our staff members are kept whole, and we aren't causing harm anywhere? So that's, that's that piece that she has absolutely been diligent on. The state ed reporting right now with all that's happening is key. She's been the reminder, telling us all the time, make sure we document because we're going to have to show what we did. She smiles with that one.
I do audit it all the time.
We get busy doing, and you don't document. And, you know, we're asked for those documents when this all shakes out. So I really just need to thank her as well for, you know, her many late hours and many conversations and her sage advice. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I can't see everybody's hand now, and I had, the dog was barking at the door. So there you go.
So I'll put you back out.
Okay. Good night, everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, James, I think the next is our presentation by Tetra Tech, so I will take Garrett and make him live. How's that?
That sounds great.
He'll be coming on as a panelist in a moment. He's promoted. Let's see if his camera's working. There he is. Perfect. Garrett, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Garrett, how are you doing?
I'm doing well. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Garrett.
Hey.
Are you good? Okay. David, you might want to mute your mic. There you go. It's all you, Garrett, I think. What do you got to say?
All right. So first of all, thank you for having me tonight. This is a first in a twenty-year career of presenting to boards. I've never done a meeting like this. So as some of you may know, I'm a recreational sailor, and I would consider this, we're in uncharted waters here. So I'll start off by just saying, just listening to you all and the challenges that are going on, I, my heart goes out to you. I'm sure it's a challenging time, and it sounds like you're, you're doing your best. So good luck and congratulations so far. So as an update to the project, our contract was finalized on February twelfth, and we started work in earnest immediately upon, upon that approval. CM proposals, as Dr. Jackson mentioned, were received on, they came in on February thirteenth. You got five proposals. The committee interviewed three finalists over the course of two days, and as I understand it, there's a recommendation of award on tonight's agenda. We've worked with CalGEE Construction in two school districts, and I, I just want to say I'm, I'm really glad to have them on board and don't have any reservations about an award to them as the CM. I think they'll be a good fit for this community, and they'll be a real asset to the project. So in terms of update on things that have gone on over the course of the last months and weeks here, so hazardous material survey of the building as it relates to this project was authorized, and the work on that is underway. We've been working with the district to gather topographical surveys, so topo survey, and geotechnical information from previous projects and previous consultants to use for this project as much as possible to minimize any costs, any testing costs that might be incurred for that, that data as much as possible. We at Tetra Tech have been working to build what we refer to as a Revit file. It's the today's version of computerated design CAD files. That's a serious undertaking that takes, takes time, and we've been building that and are well underway on having that in place. We had a, our first design user group meeting on February twenty-fifth. That was a very successful day. We met with representatives of the staff and the administration to gather input, to share some initial thoughts and get feedback. We met with a nurse, had a really good meeting with arts, and that wing, technology, security, HVAC bathrooms, and site work were all included. We followed that up afterwards with a separate IT meeting with our security and electrical engineering specialist, Steve Von Schiller, and that was a meeting on the security system and the phones to make sure that we were including Nancy in those, those design efforts. Our next user group meeting, as someone referenced tonight, is going to happen tomorrow. So we have a series of meetings set up starting at nine thirty, and nine or nine thirty, and that'll run all day. So we're going to do that with Zoom here. This is a first for us. We did a dry run day before, or yesterday, then did some testing of it today. We went through the presentation and the meetings with my team in a lot of detail to make sure that we have the highest likelihood of success tomorrow. It will be new, new territory for, I think, all of us, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that we're going to be successful, especially using the Zoom tool. Assuming that the board appoints CalGEE tonight, we will start working with them immediately, including things that would be finalizing the design schedule. They have an important component of the design process that involves the estimating piece of the project. That'll happen at milestones throughout the design, and so we need to finalize the schedule and involve them in that. The, there are also going to be a period of just ramping them up on the project and getting them up to speed. That will certainly involve time in the buildings, both with our team, and they may have some other time in the buildings as well, just to evaluate existing conditions and become fully familiar with the buildings as, as we are. The design process is well underway, and we'll, we'll see that tomorrow. There will be opportunities for us to share plans and have discussions with the board over the course of the next couple of months. We want your involvement in this, but I want to assure you that the design is, is moving forward as quickly as possible. As someone mentioned on this meeting, I think it might have been Dr. Jackson, our goal is to have all the design decisions finalized by June thirtieth. And the important piece of that is that we want to maximize input from staff before they're gone for the summer months. And so the design process will continue after that, where we'll be creating the construction documents, we'll be working with CalGEE on the final estimates and that sort of thing. So we anticipate to submit to SED in late fall, but we want to have all the, the hard design decisions finalized by, by June thirtieth in order to, to make that happen. As Dr. Jackson mentioned, we will be in the buildings doing field work. You can't design a building virtually. You can do a lot of work designed team-wise, idea-wise through virtual meetings, but we will be in the buildings doing more field work. We've had a bulk of that done, but there will be more team members coming in, and we'll coordinate that with, you know, district staff and make sure that that's, at times, are convenient for you guys and work for you guys. And that's, that's pretty much my, my update. One thing I would just reiterate is that once the design meeting happens tomorrow, we'll be talking about a schedule to come back, share a presentation with you that will show actual floor plans and talk about the, the specifics of the design. So you'll get to see those along the way and give your input early on, so we can incorporate that. And that, that's what I have. Any questions for folks, for, for, for me?
Questions? I guess Matt, you're on the design team, Jill, correct? Yeah, all right. Any input there?
I don't think so. I think that was everything. Yeah, yeah.
All right, great.
I think tomorrow, tomorrow's meeting will be informative, for sure.
I'm really excited for tomorrow. I think we're going to be successful, and we're at a great spot in the project, so I'm looking forward to it, actually.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sure it's, 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 it's not easy for every, anybody that's dealing with this situation, and it's not easy to continue to work when you have so much to take care of, and it's especially not easy to deal with schools, obviously, because you're impacted, you know, your, your clientele is impacted, so.
Well, we're, we're glad to be here to support you, and, and, you know, anything we can do along the way to help, or we're glad to do.
All right. Any other questions? Any questions? All righty. Thank you, Garrett.
Okay, we'll see you tomorrow. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Garrett, I'm moving you off.
Okay, we have a consent agenda here, items B through H.
I did something wrong there. Wait one second. It looks like I still have Garrett, and I lost. That just means I, I moved the wrong person. So give me one moment.
You voted someone off the island.
My fingers went to clearly. Matt's probably saying, what happened? I lost him completely. No, he might have taken himself off, but let me, let me find out what happened to him. So Garrett.
Garrett can leave the meeting.
Garrett is leaving the meeting, and his role is now there. I need to find out what I did with Matt, because I don't see him.
Matt's still there. He's orange.
Now, there he is. He's an attendee. I'm going to promote him again. I must have just promoted and deep-moted the wrong people. I'm sorry, Matt. You're back. Yes.
You there, Matt?
He's on.
I'm here. Yeah, yeah, thank you. I'm back. I saw the other side.
You're back. All righty. Okay, Jocelyn, are you present? There we go. Great. I just want to make sure. All right, terrific. So we have to approve items B through H in the consent agenda. Are there any questions about any of these? Some of these are tentative, right? Hudson River Sloops Clearwater Sailing Classroom, correct?
Yes, let me speak to that. I know you've done that in the past, but when I'm asked to sign a contract, I'm looking for board approval, and they weren't on your original, it could, can't speak now, the original July meeting. So they're just being added on. That just simply means, should we go forward and things be fine, we're all set to, to go forward with them. It's not a payment. It's just including them as a vendor, so we can pay them. Sarah?
I had a question regarding the service contract. Some of them run March thirteenth, for example, to June thirtieth. If those services end up not being rendered, we will not pay. Is that correct? The BOSI coaster? I'm specifically looking at the BOSI coaster.
Okay, the BOSI coasters work a little differently. You can have a BOSI coaster that you started at the reorganizational meeting, and that's what I was thinking of before the word. And so that would just be in place, and until you use that service, there's no billing. Really, you're giving, like, for example, let's take, let's see.
What I was looking at was the causal agreement.
Okay, so when you, when you go ahead and do that, and per DM, it's per use, it's, so it doesn't, it doesn't kick in until we actually do the service. One thing that districts can't do, as I think Sue talked about, is we can't pay in advance, but we need your approval before we can make that contract happen. So anything with BOSI's is as used. So we might okay this contract, a contract, and not use it at all, have no expenses, or we might, on a particular coaster, ask for ten days and use two. So it's really set up that way. So that would be my explanation. But yes, the date is really just a start date, when they send us the coaster, when we sign, and when we go forward.
Thank you.
Is that true with this contract with Lakeland?
No, that's a completely different conversation. That's, no. So I'm referring to coasters like Jonathan Costa, those kinds of coasters, where we're actually, we are okaying, but for the money to go through BOSI's through the coaster, but until we have him come and start with us, he doesn't start. No, the, the health and welfare services with Lakeland and the different school districts, that's for services for students who are in the private school in, in that setting. And then Lakeland is the LEA, so we pay, Lakeland has to provide those services to our students, and Lakeland bills us. Does that make sense?
Great.
If you're not familiar with that, at some point, I'll, I'll walk you through it really slowly. But if you look at Lakeland, we have two students there in one of their private schools, so we are providing health and welfare services that we need to provide to Lakeland. And we have a number of these all the time. It really matters when the district comes and bills us. So we've had these on the agenda for the last, at least as long as I've been here, the last meetings. But I think most people don't realize that we do pay for private school health and welfare services.
Yeah. So I need a motion to accept consent agenda, items B through H.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Oh, I'm going to make the motion here. Be resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District approves the consent agenda, item six, B through H. All in favor say aye.
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 Could I just, have you just acknowledge for the public that H is adopted twenty twenty twenty-one school calendar? The public might not know that. And it's, since it's on the consent agenda, they might not realize we're doing that. So that would mean that that calendar that says draft will be, is adopted, the draft will come off, and we'll post that so our families can know that we have a calendar for next year.
Thank you so much.
Much like this year has changed already, but, but that's our intended school calendar for next year.
Great. That's an important detail. Thank you so much. Item, is there a question? No? Okay, item, all right, I'm trying to manipulate my laptop here to be as efficient as possible. It's tricky. Committee updates is the only discussion item we're having so today. Is there any committee updates that anyone wants to share? We know the design team's doing work. We know the superintendent's search is ongoing. Is there committees right now are in a kind of standstill a little bit? Yes?
No, I just wanted to, and I'll let Courtney and Sarah talk as well, just simply say that, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that we slowed down that process a little bit. I know that Patrick Beckley was, is, is coordinating our Health and Wellness Committee, and that meeting would have happened, and he's busy getting his, his e-learning going. So everyone appreciated that breather, but I'll turn it back over to Sarah and Courtney, then I'll fill in if there's something else.
Sarah, Court?
Okay. Our last meet, Courtney?
Sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
Our last meeting for the policy committee was the, the day of our last board meeting. We haven't had one since then, obviously. I hope we can continue that work via Zoom, which is a small. I hope we can continue that work via Zoom, which is a small group of board members and Deborah. And I, while I'm sorry that the code of conduct one will be pushed off, I really appreciate what the staff has done to step up for this. So I completely understand that was necessary. And I do agree with Dr. Jackson that it would be very hard to have that conversation over Zoom, given the people we need for it. Courtney?
Nothing really to add. That's about it. Looking forward to getting back to our work. But there's a lot of other things that need to happen right now.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that, I would suggest that if you, if we can sort of do a reflective thought on, on two fronts. One, how to accomplish specific tasks, as I mentioned earlier, as a, as committee members? And, you know, in particular, you know, as solely as board members. And then the other thing that I would, I would suggest that we do is think about, you know, if there are any committees that we imagine needing to occur in the future due to this particular, uh, this particular circumstance we find ourselves in. So whether they are ad hoc committees or whatever, that you think we need to create to address the particularities of our, of our situation, maybe there's ideas there. I'm not suggesting any at this point, but I imagine there might be a need to create a new kind of committee to deal with the particularities that we're in, the context we're in.
I think the well, the fact that we started the wellness committee recently will be a big help actually going forward in this, that we have that group gathered together, thinking together and that we've met. I'm very pleased about that. I think that will be a group that'll maybe take on a different task possibly coming out of this. We'll see.
All right. All right, yay, terrific, you know, okay. Any other issues about committees? Any other things? All righty. Okay, one action item or two action items here. We need to approve the Putnam County Real Property Tax Service Contract. A copy of which is there. I need a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second? Be resolved, the Board of Education Garrison U Free School District approves a contract with Putnam County for real property tax service for 2019-2020. And be it further resolved, the superintendent be authorized to sign said contract. You got that, Deborah?
I do. We'll see. Make sure we can do actual signatures going forward.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Terrific. Here's a little piece here. We have to approve the strategic coherence plan. And that is not that, that we're going to approve an agreement between Bosse's and the strategic coherence planning. Jocelyn, do you want to say, I have a word here on the, you know, what we're doing? Just to refresh everybody's memory?
Last board meeting, we discussed how we had met back in February with Jonathan Costa about his coherence planning strategy. He works with many neighboring districts, including Howden. And we had a discussion among the board members and it seems like everyone was interested and, and positively going towards his method, which is a little bit different than strategic planning in the traditional sense. But I think we all discussed it last week and at this point, we would like to move forward so we could start considering how, how the community can become involved in this process. One of the first steps is kind of putting together, what's, so I don't remember the word for it. It's not a task force, but you know, it's a committee of community members, which includes board members, teachers, as well as people in the community writ large to, to try to work on this coherence planning that will then really commence in the fall. So at this point, the type of work we're doing is really, can be virtual, so to say, and can be really just kind of planning and thinking.
Yeah, we might, we might be able to make some, some progress in this area, but we're going to have to probably meet with Costa to determine the scope of what we can do, given the limited participation or the virtual participation of, and part of that will be forming a team. So maybe we need to do a virtual meeting with him. So anyway, I just need a vote here, a motion to accept the agreement as laid out by Deborah. If the services aren't rendered, then we don't have to pay, so.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Being resolved, the Board of Education Garrison U Free School District approves the agreement for strategic coherence planning as per Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's Coaster 512. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Item C, appoint, is it Caligy?
Caligy.
Caligy, sorry. I couldn't quite read that. Caligy Construction Management, Inc. And this is the CM, the construction manager, who will work with our architects and be the day to day on our construction project here. So be resolved, I need a motion here.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Right, being resolved, the Board of Education Garrison U Free School District hereby appoints Caligy Construction Management to act as the district's construction manager in connection with the district's current capital project on the general terms, conditions and fees set forth in a request for proposals for construction management services issued by the district and Caligy's response thereto, but subject to the execution of a contract by Caligy and the district in a form and on terms approved by the district superintendent and its legal counsel. Be it further resolved, that the board hereby authorizes the board president and/or the superintendent to execute the approved contract with Caligy and such other documents as are necessary to commence Caligy's commencement of construction management services in connection with the project. All in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? And the ayes have it. I think this is a terrific step forward, both in the planning and the construction project. I think we're really on good footing to sort of make some inroads. The planning committee obviously has some process hurdles to overcome, but it's great to see that we have all the things in place to move forward. So that's great. Okay, it is time for public comment.
I actually ask, I'm sorry, can I just sort of jump in there a little bit? I just want the board to realize that Patrick Fitzgerald, our attorney, did complete that contract. It is complete. It's in your, it's in your board docs. So that's authority for James and I to sign and go forward. I just wanted to be sure you all recognize that.
And I'll be available for signatures if need be. I can meet in the parking lot or if you don't want me in the building, okay? All right. Any, any, okay, terrific. Now it's time for public comment. I need a motion to waive the policy regarding public comment to allow for Q and A.
So moved.
Any a second?
Second.
All right. The motion is to move, to suspend the public comment policy of the Board of Education Garrison U Free School District and to allow for a Q and A via Zoom virtual. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? And the ayes have it. So if the public is listening and would like to type in their comments, feel free to, and I will read them aloud so that, so that people can hear it, I guess.
And they should be typing into the Q and A box, right? Not the chat box.
Not the chat box.
Oh, I see. All right.
I think Jesse typed one earlier into the chat box.
I've got no question from the Q and A. I just have comments in the chat box. All right. All righty. So, um. We have some child making some noise. So we have, uh, in the background here. So, um, we have a comment from Jesse Lunenpak. Is appropriate for me to read that aloud? I think it is, correct?
Yeah.
I think you can do whatever you'd like, James.
Right. Given the format of public comments, Jesse says, I will say how fortunate we all are to have such dedicated teachers and administrators working for our kids. The mandate to provide childcare for first responders is huge and will not be easy. I'm sure Deborah's going to handle it. At the middle school level, he's hoping that they'll be more, able to move to more live online instruction and away from video watching and other independent assignments. And I think that echoes some comments here. Gabe also wants to add that he really enjoyed Alex's efforts during the day and particularly during the virtual lunch. I don't know what a virtual lunch is, but it has to be fun. Thank you all for your hard work and let me know how I can help, Jesse adds. So thank you, Jesse. I get, Deborah, do you want to speak to any of those concerns or any of those thoughts?
No, I think we did that earlier. We are work in progress and we're growing every day. And today was day one and great job, everyone. Great job, parents, for working with us so closely and for all the kind comments we've been hearing.
And, you know, if there are, I just want everyone to know, like, that, how appreciative I am to the teachers, of course, but, you know, one of the things I want to, I appreciate is the patience of parents going through this process. As underscored earlier, teachers are also parenting while they're home. So it's very difficult. I mean, it's difficult to pull off a board meeting at night, let alone having kids crawling all over you asking for things, right? So you can imagine trying to deliver a math lesson and also having your children in the room or around. It's very difficult. Or spouses and/or parents with needs that might be living, living with you. So let's all try to be super patient, super supportive, the best way, best way we can. And, you know, I hope that, that we find ways of supporting our teachers and I hope that the Parent Teacher Association might be of assistance in that area as well. It's just a simple comment. Okay. Board comment? Board member comment?
James, you have two. Sarah and you have Courtney. I don't know if you see their hands up.
I got them. Sarah?
I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Jackson, Alex, Sue and all our teachers for executing this transition quickly in a really hard time. And I also wanted to say, James, that I really appreciated your leadership in this process and how our, and how the board came together to, to what I feel like made a really good decision and taking into account not only the people in our building, but also our high schoolers and all the other people who go to out of district programs are Bosse's kids and everything. So you've made a really good point to the board that, you know, we're a district, not just one building. So I really appreciate that and I hope that the public keeps in mind that we're a lot bigger than just the kids in our school too. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's, you know, it's a pleasure to work with you guys. But, you know, I said it in private, might as well say it publicly, you know, this is, nobody signs on to do this particular job this way. This is a big deal. And it's, it's, you know, I couldn't do it without the support of, we really needed, all of us, you know? When we debate whether we should, whether we should be a smaller board or a bigger board, I think we're the right size for this particular task, you know? So Court? Thank you, Sarah.
Had to see if I was muted or not. Similarly, I just wanted to echo what Sarah, exactly what Sarah just said. And thank you to Dr. Jackson and everybody in the building and all of the teachers for all of the work that they've put in pivoting so quickly. This has been pretty huge and it's really kind of amazing what everybody has, has come together to do. And also to thank Dusty for putting together, helping to host our first virtual meeting. And this is only her second board meeting with us. And she hasn't run screaming for the hills. So thanks, Dusty, for sticking with us.
Yes, David?
Deborah, is there any plan to try and systematically educate the kids about this coronavirus? I mean, given different levels of comprehension? And shouldn't there be, I guess, is the, is the comment part?
That's a great question. I think we've been so focused on keeping them calm, especially our little ones through this so that it's, it's not a panic. But certainly, that's a very good point. And if not now, in the middle of this, I think that as we look at our, our post-action reports, kind of as we're talking about what we're doing, we certainly need to, if not, if we're not out that long, we certainly need to add this to our educational process. Because much like the many factors that are going to face these young people going forward, this is one of them. And that's really our obligation as educators, to get them ready for the future. And this is one of the items that I think we're, we're seeing that's so different than anything we've experienced before. So I will certainly take that back and that's, and that's what's been happening all along. All of you and other people have been giving us ideas and we've been able to talk about it and seeing how can we do some of that going forward. But I know that, that Krista's continuing with the health curriculum. So she may be way ahead of me on this and already has been incorporating that. She's the one I would ask for sure, but that's not something we've talked about. But certainly we will.
I mean, I would say that given the, the fright aspect of this and given the fact that rumors are always going around, the sooner the better, I think would be the way to approach this.
Thank you.
Jocelyn?
Hi. So I would say, it kind of is in line with what David is thinking, um, that, you know, in this community, and not even really in Putnam County, we haven't experienced any case, not any, many cases of close ones that we know. Some of you may have people that you know who have tested positive in New York City or elsewhere, but we haven't really seen the hit yet. And so that's not to scare people, but it's more to say that it's, it's really important now, rather than a week or so from now, to really plan who you will reach out to if you become someone who has to self-isolate in the house if you are positive or ill. And also to reach out to your neighbors or elderly or people who are a little more, more vulnerable or need a little more assistance at this point, those connections are already there. But I know that the school is offering to do that for the community. And I know Nurse Melissa has been in contact with many of our families, but as we talked about as a board, it's really the community writ large. It's just our students. It's everyone who lives in the district. So I think take time to reach out to your neighbor, not physically keeping distance, but making sure that everyone, because, because it will, it will come here. We don't know how large and it's good to be prepared to have someone looking out for you and likewise, you looking out for someone else.
Thank you, Jocelyn. And I really want to thank Krista and Jessica for that sort of format for the weekly check-ins because we're sure that if it's not the families we're reaching out to on every day for all of our school, they may know someone, a neighbor or someone as well. So that's really how we're looking to network and I don't think we can say that enough. So thank you.
Yeah, I would add to Jocelyn's comment, you know, Jocelyn is a great person for being in contact. We sent a letter to our community to reach out to Jocelyn and, and our nurse for information regarding coronavirus, but also how we can be supportive. You know, one of the things to remember is that we don't have a Garrison Village board or a mayor and we, we have a town supervisor. And then after that, governmentally, we have a legislator for the county and then the county exec, and we have some state reps. But really, as far as Garrison goes, we can act thoughtfully and prudently. We can definitely represent the interests and try to serve our constituency as best we can. We can definitely represent the interests and try to serve our constituency, our community as best we can. And this is when we, uh, this is when we need to. So however we can, this is, this might be a good way to think about brainstorming ways that the school, the district can serve, uh, the community at large, not just, uh, not just the students, but also the community at large. We, you know, so that's just one of the roles we can play in these kinds of situations. And it's an obligation for us as a, as a district. Any other, any other comments? Board member comments? I think that's it. That's all I have. I don't, I can't think of anything else that I haven't said, other than, uh, you know, thanks again for everybody hanging in there. We have, we need to adjourn to executive session. In so doing, we'll open up another Zoom doc in which we will conduct executive session. Make sure that, uh, you are in a confidential room and so that we can account for the information there. This will be posted. One other thing that came to, the one thing I want us all to think about is whether we should have a special meeting, a special online forum that's just Q and A. If there is a need for such a thing, I don't want to task ourselves or anybody else or anything unnecessary. If board members feel that the community would benefit or desire a virtual, uh, meeting that they, that they can ask questions of us, a direct Q and A, feel free to reflect on that and forward that idea, because we can create something like that. Whether it is a full board, or whether it's the president, vice president, and, uh, Dr. Jackson, or, and, uh, Mr. Levine, however it be, um, we could probably create something like, like that rather easily. So reflect on that, okay? I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Be resolved that the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District adjourns to executive session to discuss matters regarding the superintendent's search and the Board of Education's self-evaluation. We will, uh, we will not be reconvening publicly or virtually, and after which we will adjourn. There will be no portion of our, no portion of our meeting will be public after the, after executive session.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Five-minute break and then log back on with the, with the other, uh, the other invite, okay? The other, yeah, thank you very much.
So this meeting will now stop. I'll stop recording at this point, and we'll make arrangements for this meeting, the video to be posted online as all the others. That will be available for you, so just letting you know.
Thank you, Garrett. Bye-bye.